Policy Committee. My name is Zahira Nas and I am the Chair. This meeting today is open to the public and press. The meeting will be webcast and the recording may also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. We have received no public questions, statements or petitions for today's meeting. Please can I request that mobile telephones and all such equipment are switched on to silent mode as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There's no fire test planned for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from town hall staff. The assembly point is Tudor Square. For the benefit of the webcast, please can each Finance and Performance Policy Committee member introduce themselves and I'll start with you, councillor Banister.
Hello. Rob Banister for Grace Park Ward, substitute on this committee today.
Thanks. Douglas Johnson, City Ward and Chair of Housing.
Martin Phipps, City Ward and Green Group spokesperson for the committee.
Martin Smith, councillor for Dorant Tully.
Glynnis Chapman, councillor for Mossborough Ward.
Mike Leaver, councillor for West Ecclesfield and Vice Chair of the Committee.
Thank you very much. And if officers can introduce themselves when they are presenting. Item one, apologies for absence. Councillor Eldott has given an apology. Councillor Rob Banister was substitute. We've also just received apologies from councillor Abdul Qiyu. Item number two, exclusion of the press and public. There is none declarations of interest. Would members wish to declare any interest in any of the items of business today? No, that's none, thank you. Item number four is on page 11 of the agenda pack. This is minutes from the previous meeting. Can I ask if this is the correct record? Yeah, that is, thank you very much. Item five, there is no public questions and petitions. Item six, there are none members' questions for today. Item seven, page 19 of the agenda pack. And this is the work programme, so I'll ask Rachel Marshall to give us an update, please.
Thank you, Chair. Good afternoon, everyone. The work programme is outlined from page 19 of the main agenda pack. If you turn or scroll, depending if you're looking at it digitally, to page 20, you'll see some recommendations that we're asking the committee to agree. I would just like to draw attention to part of this work programme, which is under section two. In the main agenda pack, you will see that there's a table under references from council and other committees. There are two referrals in there. Since the publication of this agenda, the item two, dying in poverty, has been slightly updated. So what we did start is published a supplementary, which you will find here on this front desk. It's also on the website for the public to see, so the transparency is there. So I just wanted to highlight that. If you go to page four, there is proposed, sorry, not page four, section four, it's page 23. There is proposed additions and amendments to the work programme since the last meeting, so that you'll see there, there's a new item on the ethical procurement policy that's been added. And then if you move, sorry, if you move further through the pack, you will start to see the list of items for forthcoming meetings from today and beyond. So that's for the committee to discourse if you want to suggest any edits or to add anything, that's absolutely fine. And I'll pass back to Chair, I think councillor Johnson's got his hand up. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, Rachel. Councillor Douglas?
Yes, thank you. Happy with all of those. I've got one additional item which has to go on the work programme. I've just checked with the monitoring officer. They say a piece of casework I've been helping with, it involves a disposal of land, it involves a hotel that's in my ward and a transfer involving the freehold. Because of the threshold of that, I believe it needs to come to this committee for a formal approval of some elements of it. David might want to say a little bit more about that, but I just ask that's been put on because it's been hanging around for quite a long time whilst work's been going on. And the sort of thing we'd really benefit from having that dealt with as soon as possible, so we need to be planning ahead for it.
Yes, that's right, Chair. So it's the Sheffield Metropolitan Hotel. It is a matter that we're proposing to dispose, it is reserved to this committee. I have had a conversation just before we came on and it's not quite ready to bring yet. I don't have an actual date, so I suggest we put it on as a matter still to be allocated to a meeting and then we can put it on.
Thank you. Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chair. It was just going back to the point on dying in poverty. It's great that we've got a briefing in. Can I just double check that doesn't preclude us then discussing it in committee? Thank you.
Yep, that's, that's fine, thank you. And councillor Douglas, that's fine, we'll get that on to the agenda and into the work programme. Okay, so there is any other questions or comments? And this report does come with recommendations for approval. Have you all approved? Yeah, that's fine. Thank you very much. Going on to item number eight now, and this is the capital approvals, 25, 26, month five, and this is on page 29 of the agenda pack. Over to you, Damien.
Hi, I'm Damien Watkins and I'm the Finance Manager in the Capital Team. Just here to present the capital approvals and variations that have been brought forward this month. In a slight change from the usual way, I'm going to leave the item regarding the Springs Leisure Centre investment to the end, so I'll do all the others, take questions on those and then we'll address that separate item, as I believe that might be the most useful way of doing that this time. Okay, so starting off on the Transport Region and Climate Change, we've got the addition of 58K to address a collision hotspot at the junction with Ringing Road and Common Lane to introduce a new refuge island and a dropped tactile crossing. At Redmires Road, there's going to be the introduction of a 20 mile an hour speed limit on parts of this and Lodge Lane following requests that have been received from the South West Line. Cycle hangers, it's an increase of 130K to 150K following feasibility to begin the next phase of the on-street secure cycle storage. And we've got a list of proposed sites included in that particular item as well. At the Sheaf Porter flood defence scheme, following on from the acceptance of the grant last month, this is the increase in budget by about 2 million to 2.8 million to complete more detailed modelling and design of solutions in preparation for submission of a business case to the Environment Agency to get the full funding for the delivery of the scheme. And it's to address the flood risks on the sheaf from Ladies Bridge up to Doran Millhouses and at the porter from the train station up to Whiteley Woods. So there will be further work done before we submit funding for the full delivery of that scheme. Under housing, we've got a vehement of budget of 2.6 million from the main tower blocks fire risk assessment works budget. So last month, we separated out the internal and external works to be delivered as separate work streams. There's now been a suggestion to move the external bin stores element to its own separate business unit, so that can progress ahead of the rest of those works. We have a strategic acquisition for temporary accommodation to approve the use of 7.1 million from the stock increase programme allocation towards a purchase and refurbishment of an existing building to provide 36 family temporary accommodation apartments to reduce the reliance on hotels and bed and breakfast accommodation, which is part of our general stock increase programme strategy and will hopefully deliver savings around that temporary accommodation budget. Around asbestos and the health and safety in the housing area, we're just reducing the capital allowances in the housing programme for that to just reflect the fact that the ongoing surveys around asbestos are actually a revenue item rather than a capital item. And also just to report as well, a contract saving that we've achieved on the Carwood District heating renewal scheme, so that's coming at 125K less than estimated. Education, children and families, we're looking to demolish the caretaker property at Brunswick Primary School, a cost of around 55K. It's currently in bad state of repair and it's incurring maintenance, ongoing maintenance costs and that site is likely to be, it's going to fall within the compound area of the rebuild for that school, which is occurring under the Department for Education's primary rebuilding programme. So it's considered cost effective and best use of funds to demolish that property at this point. At Newfield School, we're looking to develop an integrated resource for special educational needs, a cost of approximately 2 million to support the school developed 30 places in secondary and that's part of a citywide strategy to increase localised SEND provision. We're going to create a standalone block, which is going to be outside the current PFI contract, so that'll be able to be managed by the school itself. And it's contributing to our overall strategy, our citywide strategy to increase localised provision of SEND to help reduce pressure on transport budgets, for example. We're looking to add in 103K to the feasibility funding that we're issuing to Inova Trust for their work at Forge Valley. They were already working on an expansion of general secondary places. We're offering additional feasibility funds for them to look at the improvement of a six form block in particular. Likely that the trust themselves will carry out that work, but that's just to allow us to get the detailed costs in back for that. Then in for grants that were due to issue, this is a change to one that's been brought previously and it's only a minor change, but granted places for people. We received some funding to remediate the land at Ardmore Street and it's part of a deal that will see the site developed for affordable housing by places for people. Our original payments were going to be linked to the approval of planning permission at that site. But in order to get to that stage, there is some remediation work that needs to be done, which will be part of an approved remediation plan. So in order to be able to advance this, we've moved the payment of the grant as linked to the delivery of this remediation plan rather than the discharge of all planning conditions, because otherwise that could have delayed the development of the site further down the line while we were waiting for the approval of full planning permission. And then we've also got a grant for acceptance, which is for city region sustainable transport funding of an additional 830K to continue the development work on the scheme to improve brush journey times on the A61. That's that first section, so I think I suggest I'll take any questions on those and then we'll come back and I'll speak about the Springs Leisure Centre.
Thank you very much, Damien. Councillor Chapman?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just want to refer to page 46 and the increase of the council housing stock increase. I would like to see this go forward really quickly because I just think it's important that families aren't put in temporary accommodation, you know, in bed and breakfast and everything else. So I just hope this moves forward quicker than anything else that we've got.
Councillor Douglas?
Thanks. Well, as a response to that one straight away as Chair of Housing, it's really welcome what councillor Chapman said. It's been discussed in some detail with the Housing Committee and right across the board. We're all really supportive of the work that's to be done there. So yeah, that's, that's very welcome. I just want to say something. First of all, I should probably declare an interest actually, so I wonder if that could be noted, Rachel, about the fact that I'm a member of the Yorkshire Regional Flood and Coastal Committee, which is not funding this element of the capital increase here, but it is the main funder of the flood defence works along the whole length of the sheaf and the whole length of the porter there. So actually, that's a very significant programme. In particular, it affects not just the houses and businesses right along this length, but also some really important parts of road and rail infrastructure in the sense that the sheaf runs right along the railway and between Sheffield and Nowick Hill Road. So that's really important. What I was going to say was, I just wanted to flag up the fact that although this piece of funding is very important, it's to be welcomed, there are some quite significant challenges to the whole programme because of essentially the way the government has changed funding to mean that at the moment, there's big questions about whether this whole scheme is viable and how that will happen. So it's a big concern. Essentially, it's cuts to flood defence funding from central government through DEFRA and the Environment Agency. And there is a lot of work on the background to try and see how the flood defence experts in the region can respond to that. But it's these bigger schemes, especially in urban areas, that are most at risk because of that cutting funding. And I just wanted to flag that up. So it does mean that Simca's intervention here is obviously really welcome to keep the work on the planning on this going ahead, even though delivery of actual flood defences is likely to be much later in the future than would otherwise have happened had the funding not been cut.
Thank you, councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the whistle stop to Damien. The Sheaf Porter flood defence, 3 million quid for the business case is a lot of money, but it's a big one. Do we have any indication of the potential cost of the whole thing? 3 million quid for a business case kind of implies it's going to be huge. I've got another couple of questions, but perhaps someone first.
Yeah, I mean, it will be tens of millions. I've seen an estimate of around 35 for the whole thing. And again, so as councillor Johnson said, the additional Simca funding is good because it allows us to progress that design and the more detail we've got, the more evidence we can provide, which will support that bid if in the face of funding cuts potentially, that will support that. But yeah, it is, it's tens of millions, yeah.
Thank you. And that was just another minor one on the cycle hangers project. We've got some in Dorant Tully by the station, they're very good, not fully utilised, but pretty well utilised. When we say we've got somebody to look after the maintenance, unfortunately, we've had some vandalism. Does the contract for that include for replacement if they are vandalised out of use?
I honestly, it did, but we'll have to go back and check because it's, yeah, the contractor installs, will maintain and there's a payment of a fee for the use of the locker, which again, obviously manages that. But there was some support going in from the Clean Air Zone Revenue Funding to support that. But I'll double check if, you know, if the levels of vandalism, what level of repair can be expected from the contractor.
That'd be fine, it was just a minor one. Like I said, they are good. Thank you.
Okay, Damien, there is any further question on this part? So do you want to go on to the leisure stretch? Yeah?
Yeah, Chair, I think councillor Johnson just declared an interest. Can I just, can I just deal with that? His membership is another registrable interest, although it doesn't directly impact the status of that body because it's a funding decision they have made. I think for openness and transparency, it's right that councillor Johnson has raised it, but it's not a matter, which means he has to not take part in the decision.
Sorry, I should have specified, I was declaring it's a personal interest and not as a pecuniary one. Yeah, sorry about that.
Thank you, thanks for clarification. Back to you, Damien.
Yes, I'll just, a brief summary. So following on from the initial feasibility works, this is of around a million pounds, this was to approve the addition of a further 50 million to provide the full budget for construction of a new facility at the Springs Leisure Site. It will be the first major investment as part of the leisure strategy that was approved in 2021, following the selection of the operator for the new leisure contract. So the plan is for a three-storey site, which will include a main pool, learning pool, five court sports hall, soft play facilities and indoor bowls facilities. Works are expected, it's now to commence with the selected contractor on further detailed design, looking at a start on site in October 26 to complete around October 28 currently. And as per the leisure strategy investment proposal, the investment at Springs Concord, Hillsborough and Ponds Forge will be funded by a prudential borrowing and the repayment of that is covered via the core revenue budget for leisure and increased income expected from the operator. There will be temporary requirement for reserves to support this position, estimated around nine million, but that's expected to be repaid by around 2035. I've got colleagues with me from Finance and the Service to answer any specific questions on this matter.
Thank you, Damien. Councillor Phipps?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Damien. That's really useful and thanks for running us through the previous appendices as well. So it's useful, so to reflect that this originated from that decision in 2021, which didn't really have much detail and specifics. And now we're kind of at the point where we're looking at approving 50 million worth of spend on it. And it doesn't feel like there's been enough oversight to us by the actual committee around that ask for 50 million pounds, like the actual financial figures. So I'm not saying this is a bad, like a bad thing to do, we shouldn't invest in our leisure facilities, but it just doesn't feel like it's followed the due process that it should under a committee system. Normally we'd get items like from transport and we'd have confidence that Transport Committee has been kept up to date. They know like this is going to cost 20 million pounds, that will mean they can't do X, Y and Z, but this is their priority. It doesn't necessarily feel like CPL have had that oversight of this item and I don't think they were briefed on the actual figures until a week ago, two weeks ago. If, if at all. I understand there was a briefing around that period, but I don't know if the exact figures were mentioned at that time or not. But there certainly hasn't been a formal decision by that committee around these figures, to my knowledge. So with that in mind, we think that really CPL should be having a look at this and saying to us, like, yes, this is our priority, please do make a decision on whether this is the right spend, like, and we're spending it correctly. Because as Finance Committee, we should be scrutinising and saying, okay, like, this makes sense to us as a financial commitment, but it's the Policy Committee to say, this is definitely our priority and what we want to do. And from the Green Group, we're just not sure that we have that at the moment because there isn't that decision trail to say that. So yeah, I'd like to ask that this is looked at by CPL formally and then comes back to this committee for a decision?
I'll, I'll give you the opportunity to, to answer that question in terms of the decision-making process.
Hi, thanks, Chair. Sorry. Lisa, first Director of Parks Leisure and Libraries, I've come to help answer some of the specifics on this one. So it's a capital programme, so not within the remit of Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee as such. In terms of the decision-making, as mentioned by Damien, the original decision was made at Co-op Executive in 2021. And then I've got a list of things I'm going to talk through. So in September 2022, we approved the Sport and Leisure Strategy, which was approved by the leader and the Co-op Executive at that time. And within that Sport and Leisure Strategy, that outlined the commitment to the 100 million of investment. So Springs wasn't broken down to the 50, but the commitment to the 100 million investment was made in that decision in September 22. And then in November 22, there was a leisure investment update that was brought to Finance and Procurement Committee, confirming the approach to the investment planning. In June 23, the decision was taken by the leader. It was a delegated decision from that November 21 decision that was taken by the leader in consultation with the Director of Finance and Commercial Services and General Council. And that included a closed appendix on the financial assumptions and indicative investment levels, okay? And then in July 24, as part of the decision on the Upper Thop Health and Living Centre investment, that lease was approved in the context of the 100, 100 million. And then in December 24, as part of the contract award for the new operator to everyone active and the award for the Sport and Leisure Facilities, again, the leader of the council in consultation with General Council, Director of Financial and Commercial Services and myself awarded the contract to everyone active on the basis of the agreed investment assumptions. So there was always an assumption that Springs would be rebuilt. And as part of that delegated decision to the leader, the principal of the investment was endorsed through the Communities, Parks and Leisure Capital Programme Report and an admin leaders briefing on the 28th of October 24, which was attended by group leaders and deputies. And that sent, set out the procurement bids and the assumed investment. And then the contract award to everyone active was made on the basis of those agreed assumptions.
Sorry. Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming and for everyone's work on the report. I should have led with that as well. I guess what I'm not really hearing is, at any of those more recent points, was 50 million mentioned as the sum for Springs. So in, but again, I guess none of that was, was that at CPL was the last one? I couldn't quite remember. Because leader isn't really, I don't know, under a cabinet system. That kind of makes more sense under a cabinet system, just consulting with the leader, but under a committee system, I'd expect the CPL committee to have been cited on those figures.
So again, as it's a capital programme, they weren't briefed specifically on 50 million. So and throughout, throughout the process, and going back to 2021, because it does take away for, to develop the specifications, we did initial, initial surveys of each of the facilities and that gave us an indicative both for the backlog maintenance and to bring the facilities up to modern required standard and make them fit for purpose. Once the decision was taken, that, that would be around 100 million. I'm going to bring my finance colleagues in a minute to start working through the financial model. But once we knew that that was in the ballpark of 100 million, that's when the detailed design work started. And as part of that detailed design work, it was always the plan to rebuild Springs because it was one of the oldest and needed the most investment. So we know that Springs, being the oldest and needing significant investment along with Concord, was looking at being rebuilt. And only through that detailed design work, which Kate will talk to you in more detail about, were we able to come to that figure of 50 million, which is well within the budget envelope that has been allocated both through reserves and borrowing to be paid back by 2035. I'll let Kate give you a bit more detail, is that?
Yeah, thanks. Yeah, just to add to what Lisa's run through already, we have briefed on a number of occasions the CPL committee as we've moved through this process and developed the designs and costs. So that included the kind of overarching programme, an update on the progress in February this year. 17th of June, we did an update on Springs and Concord consultation and the inclusion of indoor bowls into the scheme. And then the 21st of August, we did an update on specifically on Springs around consultation design proposals. Through that time, we've been working, developing the design, as Lisa says, and it was, it's only been in recent couple of months that we've got to that figure at the end of our re-basement to design process. So we haven't had that figure. When we received that figure, then we worked really closely with our colleagues in Strategic Finance to look at, is that affordable in the overall model? So then when we had that figure and we'd obviously done the briefing with Finance Committee as well, we also ran through that same briefing on the 10th of November with CPL Committee. So they've had exactly that detail that we ran through with Finance Committee as well. So they have had those figures. But we didn't have that overall figure until very recently, so that's why it probably hasn't sort of appeared earlier.
Yeah, so they have been kept appraised of this, not in the formal decision-making because that's been through the route that I've set out, but as Kate and Tammy have done at least monthly briefings to them as well.
Councillor Johnson?
Can I just follow up on that? I mean, I think actually, everything you said is, is important and relevant and detailed, but actually, that's precisely the sort of thing you'd normally expect to see in a, in a proper report on item to a committee. And for every other committee, I mean, all the finance scrutinises finances, the substance of proposals normally goes through the, the policy committees in itself. And I suppose that's the kind of thing I'd like to say. But there are, there's just quite a lot of things that, you know, in the, in the need to get some assurance from a sort of financial soundness point of view, it is just not there yet and you just realize a lot more work to be done. But I mean, one of the things you said was that even in 2024, you said, talked about there was a decision of the leader of the council in consultation with yourself and someone else. And I'm just seeing, how can that happen in a committee system where the one thing we know is that no single councillor, not even the leader of the council, can make decisions? And it's that sort of degree of scrutiny that we perhaps need to look at because I certainly wasn't aware of someone having made that decision. And that's, that's of concern to me. Fundamentally, the concern is, whichever way you look at it, 51 million pounds is a lot of money. It's not an investor save proposal for this particular facility. It's not an investor save proposal for this particular facility, even though, you know, we were told along it, it was aimed to be, it's, it's not. If we're investor save, then, yeah, we could probably go with the figures a bit more. If it's not, then we probably need a bit more scrutiny of it, really. I don't quite see how the figures are going to come in, because in terms of the scale of that, so I mean, yeah, we, we have items on our capital approval spot for fifty, fifty one thousand, but this is fifty one million, it's just a completely different order of things. But just looking at the returns there, I mean, the returns per year and the orders of, you know, hundreds of thousands, I think, yeah, two hundred and eighty one thousand per annum is the difference, as, as a result of this development. You know, totaling three million pounds in savings over the course of the fifteen year contract. So again, yeah, it's, it's not just, it's not an investor save project, it's a long way off that. And that might be fine, you know, it's a, it's good to have a new facility there, and I don't think we're going to argue that. But equally, yeah, it's a lot of money spent out of the revenue budget, which, you know, can therefore be applied to anything else. So I'm not saying it shouldn't be applied to this, but we need to have that sort of discussion, I think. And ideally by the people who are more versed in the overall leisure strategy before it comes for approval here. So I think that's the concern I have about the proportionate amount of scrutiny.
Before you come in, I'm just going to ask David to come in, if that's all right.
Yeah, just to correct one point, councillor Johnson's right, in the post moving to committee system, the leader couldn't take a decision. Actually, Lisa's selling herself short, she actually made the decision in consultation with the leader, myself and Philip. And I've just double, I've just double checked the decision record to make sure that that is correct. And that falls from the delegation from the Cooperative Executive. So that they were the correct decision-making routes following that initial decision in October 21. Just to also say, there is no formal, because councillor Phipps has said, send this back to CPL for a formal decision. There is no formal decision for CPL to make in this case, because the decision to add this to the capital programme is a decision for this committee. And if there is to be that scrutiny, then it's right for this committee to do it, and that's why the report is here and the people are here. And just one final point that I was going to make, that I've just forgotten, which I will come back to.
That's fine, I'll let Lisa.
Yeah, I was going to say, first of all, thanks for clarifying that decision, or that point on the decision-making, because that's important, I appreciate. But, well, I suppose I want to emphasise then, that that decision, I wasn't aware that decision being made even, that seems to be important for any of us to be able to scrutinise how we've got to this point in time. So I suppose the logic of that is that if, if David is right about saying that CPL can't make a formal decision on that, and I'm sure it's arguable, they could, it could be discussed or it could be done by way of informal briefing or whatever. But whatever way, if it had to be scrutinised at this committee, then I'd suggest that, like Martin says, we'd need a formal report on it, just because of the extent of it, really. And so we can actually address all those new facts that come into light now, so that's my point.
Sorry, I have remembered the other point I was going to make, which was about whether for CPL to say whether this is the right priority and whether this is what they want to spend the fifty million on, this is coming from reserves, so it wouldn't be available as funds for CPL to spend on something else within it. It's earmarked reserve specific for this, based upon the actual profile and spending that was made of the decisions before.
Can I also confirm, so it's not like we can use this money for anything else either? Philip, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And then just to add to some of the points that have been made already, in terms of the, the business case that was approved in December 2024, that was on the basis that the council makes these investments in those facilities. If the council chooses not to make those decisions, there is a knock-on impact, because it's a materially different contract than we would have entered into without those investments. There would have been a cost to the council to enter into a contract with, with a provider if we hadn't made those investments. The fact that we've chosen to make those investments means that the contract is materially beneficial to us. There's a very significant difference in terms of what we would have had to pay versus what we might receive in income over the life of the contract as a result of making these investments. So whilst individually, Spring Leisure Centre might not be an investor save, because the fifty one million pounds isn't recovered in full through Springs, across the contract, that is recovered. And I think we've got to be careful in, in saying that for something like a leisure centre, we expect a leisure centre to be able to repay in full its own costs, because it would inevitably mean that parts of the city don't have leisure centres because their residents can't afford to use them, in the same way that other parts of the city could afford to use them and would end up with a disparity in provision in that way. So I think the premise of the business case is that overall it's an investor save, because we put the investment in and over the whole contract, we recover the income. Springs in itself doesn't recover the income and probably would never do so, and the same would be true with Concord, because of the location of those leisure centres and the income from other leisure centres, Hillsborough and Pond's Forge, which also will have investment, will recover over and above their costs.
I've also just checked, the decisions taken were published on the council's website, as they're required to be for officer decisions. Clearly now, there's an element of commercial sensitivity, so not all the information is there. But if members are interested, then they are entitled to seek that information out.
And that, that information was shared with a leaders briefing before the decision was taken. So that was the conversation that happened in October 2024 with the leaders of each of the three administrations at the time. And that led to my decision, no, not the leaders' decision, my decision being taken in consultation with the leaders of the administration as well and with David and Philip.
Okay, I'm just going to bring councillor Leverie now.
Thanks Chair, I do support what Philip says about this, because at the end of the day, you can't go out to tender and award a contract on the basis that you might change something downstream, because you're making that tender invalid. And therefore, the whole process of what's been happening and, and arriving at the final decision means it does sit with finance. We're just financially approving this allocation, I think it's a hundred and seventeen million that's been set aside, that's the sum that was, that was put in the public domain two years ago. So this is a part of that hundred and seventeen million. Hillsborough, obviously, originally was going to be a new build, it's not now, it's going to be an internal refurb. So we're managing with that envelope of hundred and seventeen million. Seems to me, if Concord's going to be of the order of fifteen mil-, of fifty million, then you have seventeen million for an internal refurb. And we're working within the limits that we've laid down ourselves. Thank you Chair. And by the way, we do expect things like value engineering to be going on throughout this project to ensure that we do get the maximum use of the capital, and if any surplus is there, they will go back in.
Lisa, did you want to come in?
Yeah, just, just to reiterate as well, that the, the point about the reserves being allocated to these projects will be repaid through the investment. But as a combination of the return, not just from Springs, because as Philip said, Springs, being the demographic and the location geographically that it's in, is not going to generate sufficient income to repay that fifty million. And that's why you have to take a look at the, the facilities as a whole and the contract as a whole, and over the lifetime of the contract as well. So not to just look at it as in the, the revenue reserves and the borrowing, because the reserves will really be paid back and then the, the income, the forecasting of that income will change as well over the life of the contract. And that will start to become more favourable to the council as, as the contract progresses through its lifetime. And then there is also the element of the backlog maintenance as well, that is going to be rectified as part of this investment. So things like English Institute of Sport that needs money spending on it, because it's getting to thirty years old, also needs to be factored in.
councillor Smith.
Thank you. Thank you Chair, thank you for the information. Just wanted a comment on, reflecting on something that colleagues on the other side of the chamber have said. There was a comment that there's been a lack of oversight. But I, I've heard the chief financial officer confirm that the business case was approved last year. I've heard from senior officers that it's well within the budget envelope that was previously discussed. I've heard, talking to colleagues on CPL, they've had at least, at least three detailed briefings on this since June. So I respectfully disagree about the lack of oversight. And from what I'm hearing, I, I support this, thank you.
Thank you councillor Phipps.
Thank you, thanks Chair. Yeah, I'm, I'm just reflecting on something David said. I don't know, it feels like it would be appropriate for CPL or any committee that the capital approval sits within to kind of have some kind of formal work item on that, because that's, they would oversee the strategy part of it, wouldn't they? Otherwise, like, all capital schemes in their entirety, so not just the approval of them, but the discussion of them, like, connecting Sheffield would fall entirely under finance. So I, I, I don't know, I just felt a bit of a lack of clarity there, that there, there, there could be, if this committee chose, we could refer something like a review of the leisure review strategy, which could include looking at this ask. Whether, it wouldn't be up to them, like you say, to endorse the ask, and that would be it, because it would still have to come back to us to approve the fifty one mil, or however much the financial ask would be. But presumably, there would be some room in there for looking at the actual strategy.
So the, the strategy was approved by the Cooperative Executive and it, it's a matter of when we, of how we transferred over, that we didn't remake all the decisions that had previously been made and put them back through the committee system. So the, the strategy was approved by the Cooperative Executive and then it's proceeded in line with those delegations that were made. Now, had CPL wanted to relook at it, then it might have done so had it decided to look at it on its work programme. But it, it hasn't done that, it's had the briefings and has, has been satisfied. I think the other thing to point out is that this is included in the capital strategy that was approved by full council as part of the budget process as well. So there was always those opportunities to have a look at this.
Lisa, do you want to come back? Just following on from David's point, sorry, just to give you councillor Phipps some reassurance, it is part of the capital, the wider capital programme, but also the capital reports that go to Communities, Parks and Leisure Committee. So Kate, it was our lead on capital, presents to, and Stuart Turner from Parks and Countryside, present the capital in train, the forward look, kind of the next two to three years, the next five years, the next ten years. So the CPL committee have received that. It was in the, it was set out in the forward, the annual forward look as well. So the workshop that we had with Community Parks and Leasures members in the summer, that fed into the forward look, so it's included in that. And it also probably just worth pointing out as well, that since the decision was made in 2021, which was November, that decision was, was reviewed in 2022, 23. And the finances were re-looked at, we had cost of living crisis, energy crisis. So within that context, and the employers' national insurance and things change, so within that context, all the figures were revisited. And the, the contract with Sheffield City Trust, as a result of that, was extended from, and from August to December, because we took longer to redevelop the finances, to check them and to seek that the, it was still affordable in the con-, in the operating context that we were looking at. So the decision was reviewed and, and the procurement was paused while we checked that affordability. So just to give you some assurances, that it, it's not just been four years since this has been looked at.
councillor Leverie.
Yes, thanks for that. I mean, at the end of the day, we are not privy to contractual arrangements that are in place with the operator and the, and the impact of any changes that are made. We rely on the officers to make that decision and advise us, and if they think something has to come back to committee, I think it's well within our remit to come back and say, yes, we think there's a change here and we need to discuss it. But it's not for us to start making changes to something that's already been laid down in the process that's in place now. Thank you.
councillor Douglas.
Yeah, so I think again, this demonstrates, you know, why we could really benefit from having all this information. There's been a lot of valuable information shared today, but it's nowhere in a report. And if you look back in two years' time and ask who signed this off, and it's one line in the capital approvals in an appendix to stand report, there'll be a question, where's the discussion? And, you know, if you aren't going to go back and look at the webcast, yeah, we need this bringing together. Because me, for instance, I'm quite persuadable by Philip's description that this is actually, has an impact on contractual requirements. But that's a completely different argument to what was brought forward. And, you know, if we're saying that, that, that makes sense. You know, originally, we were told it was an investor save scheme, and I think for reasons that we now understand, that is not an investor save scheme. You know, it might be possible to say, there's enough money being made off the contract rising from the arena, et cetera, that we can afford to spend spare money and use some reserves to make this work. But, you know, for instance, I'd really rather see all that laid out in a way that is coherent and brings that together and brings together all this background information. And I know there has been a lot of discussion about it. There's reference to the admin leaders briefing last year, so I would be that, and we did have a briefing on the ongoing work on the, you know, quite difficult job of costing up the capital programme on the leisure strategy. But I don't recall we had any discussion about how much, you know, this particular centre would cost and there was work going in the background, but of course, that's consistent. And Kate, you've, you've said already, that, you know, the figures only came together in the last couple of months. So those previous briefings necessarily didn't have the discussion of that. And then if, because if we had, we might have been looking at, you know, well, those costs are very high. Councillor Leverie is on the same page, and he says it's really important to look at value engineering. But of course, we've been told, value engineering is not being considered. It says it here, that's what I've been told. So it's not being considered.
Can I just respond on that? We haven't considered it at this point, because at the moment, the proposals are still deliverable within the budget available. If costs increase or we feel we need to visit that, we certainly would do. But we haven't at this point. What we have got within that construction cost, which I understand is a big sum of money, within the construction cost, that includes design risk still, because of the stage we are at, so there's a big allowance for that. And also inflationary costs as well, so the, the figure may look big, but it's, it's made up of, of quite a lot of other elements other than just the construction cost at the moment.
So, so value engineering on this project that is, that has brought us to the fifty one million has not happened yet, but value for money considerations has. So I think that was a point made by councillor Leverie, that working with colleagues in Capital Delivery Service and Finance, each of the elements that make up this fifty one million are being challenged to ensure they provide value for money and best use of council resources. And as Kate said, if we got to a position where the project envelope, a hundred and seventeen million, the income that was coming from the contract, et cetera, was not affordable within that budget envelope, then value engineering would absolutely happen, because it's evolved through the process to get us to the point of what can we do in this three-storey rebuild, et cetera. So we would then go back to, to that, but currently it is affordable.
Can I take councillor Leverie and I'll come back to you?
Yeah, just a couple of points. I mean, value engineering is a process that you apply when you're actually going through the construction of the, the building. It isn't something you put in, in advance. It's part of what the council should be doing on all capital projects to make sure that you get best value. So it's nothing to do with what you'd look at in advance. And I think, you know, we've, we've debated this at length, and I, I think we should move to the vote on this.
Yes, of course, understood, yeah. I mean, it takes a point of value engineering, I mean, it says here on the briefing, yeah, value engineering is not currently being considered. And appreciate that doesn't stop it being considered in the future, but actually, there is no committee endorsement of that. But also just on the, on the overall programme, I think you just mentioned the overall programme of a hundred and seventeen million. But we know it doesn't fit into that, because we were given the figures the other day. It's well over that and it's back at the point where it was originally, before there was that intervention, actually by Tony Fox, when he was leader of the council, to say, this is spiralling out of control, it's got to come down. And so another set of options were produced. And so we, we now have, we seem to be in a position where we're back at And so, we now have, we seem to be in a position where we're back at the original cost envelope base, but where that was to be applied across the whole of the leisure estate is now just down to five facilities. And it's just that, it just seems there's a great deal of stuff that really beat out of control in the sense that, you know, we don't have firm assurances in the form of a report that we can absolutely rely on. There's, you know, there's just a lot to discuss there to see how this would work and to be sure about what we're deciding today. So, I mean, I think going back to it, so what councillor Phipps proposed is a deferral for fuller consideration of that. So, whether it's to the Community Parks and Leisure Committee, as Regional suggested, or whether it's felt more appropriate within this committee, I think that's what we'd have to propose still.
So, are you making a formal proposal?
Yeah, thanks, Chair.
So, that goes to vote? So, either it gets deferred back to the communities' policy, which we can't do. So, we can't do that. We have had a chance to scrutinise it on this committee and we have been doing that throughout. I'm satisfied that there hasn't been a lack of oversight. Your concerns are absolutely valid. It's a large amount of money to spend, but I do feel satisfied that it has gone through the process. And on this committee, we've discussed that quite a bit, especially in terms of the transport committee, you know, making sure that we're very clear where decisions have been made. I think going forward, I think all the decisions were made in the right places, it's just that it wasn't in the report. So, I can understand why councillor Johnson and councillor Phipps are quite concerned about it. But, you know, CPL have had briefings on this. They could have called it in at any time and asked for a, more of a deeper dive into this if they needed to. But also, this was part of the capital strategy that was approved at full council. The 117 million envelope, you know, we've heard that figure and we have discussed that for the last two, three, four, maybe years now. The 51 million, I understand that that's, you've only mentioned that recently because that's when you found out that's how much it's going to cost for springs. So, that's also understandable. So, David, they've made a proposal. Do we vote on it or, because I know you can't go back to communities, have you also said it comes back to finance?
Yeah, I mean, if we're being told we can't suggest this goes to communities to review, then we could take this as a formal item at a future finance.
Yeah, I mean, that could be a proposal that we could vote on. If the committee feels it needs more information, then it could vote to defer this to a later date.
Okay, so I can put that to committee if you feel like this, this item in particular needs to come back and if we need to have any more discussion around it. I mean, I've been on two very in-depth briefings on this. And I know over the last few weeks, I could have contacted any of the officers and asked for any clarification, which I did do on the second briefing. But if people on this committee feel like you want this to come back, no, so that's full, okay, so, yeah. But I think everybody else here on the committee feels like we've had ample time to discuss this item. So, I'm going to go straight to the recommendation to the approval for the whole of the capital approval scheme. So, sorry, that's fallen.
Absolutely, yeah. Can I just ask that my votes recorded as voting for that proposal to defer? Yeah, both of us then, yeah. But both of us please, yeah, thanks.
Thank you, thank you very much. So, there is any further questions or comments? And thank you for being here today. And I hope that we are kept up to date as part of the capital approvals with how you get on with this project. So, the recommendations are for approvals, so it's for the leisure, but everything else that Damien talked about earlier on in the capital approval. So, are we all agreed?
Agreed on everything other than that item, which Douglas and I will abstain on. Thank you.
Thank you, that's fine. So, agreed on everything but apart from the leisure springs, which they'll abstain on. But everybody else, are we okay? Are we all happy to approve yet? So, that's, that's fine. That's, that's all been approved. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, so moving on to the next item of the agenda now. This is on page 65 of the Agenda Pack and this is item number nine. This is the quarter two budget monitoring.
Great, thank you, Chair. I'm Philip Gregory, Director of Finance and Commercial Services. I'm Councillor Section 151 Officer.
I'm Jane Moby, Assistant Director of Finance and Accounting. And today I'll provide an overview of our 2526 quarter two budget monitoring position. I like the key pressures, actions underway and the outlook for the remainder of the year. The paper contains key information about the in-year position with detailed budget monitoring provided in Appendix 1 and 2, the capital programme monitoring in Appendix 3, treasury management in Appendix 4 and the collection fund monitoring in Appendix 5. At quarter two, the council's projecting an overspend of 23.6 million, which is 4.6% of our net revenue budget. This is an improvement of 4.6 million since quarter one, reflecting the impact of the targeted mitigations and tighter spend controls. Our aim is to reduce the overspend to below 20 million by year end if the current trend continues. The housing revenue account is forecasting a 3.4 million overspend to budget or a reduced contribution to the capital programme. This is an improvement of 2.3 million in the quarter. The key drivers of the overspend in adult social care is persistent demand and high complexity of need. Last autumn, the council faced a significant surge in demand before the budget was finalised, which resulted in our base budget for the service not being quite sufficient for demand. The overspend is forecast at 29.7 million, but this is an improvement of 1.6 million since the first quarter. Children's services are forecasting a 19.8 million overspend, mainly due to rising costs, and this is a 4.7 million deterioration since quarter one. Home to school transport is forecasting 6.6 million overspend driven by rising pupil numbers and complex timetables. Homelessness services is forecast a 2.1 million overspend on temporary accommodation, but this is a significant improvement on last year and demonstrates the actions being taken and making a real impact. We're forecasting delivery of 45.7 million savings against a target of 58.5 million, which is a shortfall of 12.8 million or a 78% delivery rate against our budget implementation plans. The main shortfalls are in adult social care, where initiatives are delayed due to the pace required of transformation, and in children's, where there are delays in send transport reforms and other initiatives within secure residential. In terms of actions and mitigations, there's targeted work underway and senior leadership is closely overseeing recovery. In adults, focus on cutting non-essential spend, using technology and consolidating transformation products, projects. Consultation on charging changes is underway and we've seen an improvement of 1.6 million in the quarter so far. In children's, the position has worsened by 4.9 million within the quarter due to rising demand, particularly with expensive placements. The service remains committed to reviewing these high-cost placements, expanding kinship care and developing new fostering models. In home to school transport, the positions remain stable from quarter to quarter, but actions around demand management, expanding personal travel budgets, improving fleet efficiency and reducing single taxi occupancy are underway and expect to yield results in the next quarter. Housing General Fund has an improvement of 0.5 million in the quarter, but notably, the position represents comparable improvements of 5 million on the previous year from increased prevention work, reduced temporary accommodation, improved void turnarounds and new partnerships to increase the supply. In HRA, we've seen an improvement of 2.4 million in repairs and maintenance due to the increased capitalisation of eligible improvement works. The HRA has also benefited from reduced financing costs due to loan repayments that have resulted in 7.8 million saving for the HRA and 0.8 million annual discount for the service. Organisation-wide spending controls are now in place. So, recruitment restrictions, vacancy factors and tighter controls on discretionary spend have been implemented since September. An established exemption process applies to resourcing decisions for roles that are regulatory requirements, health and safety critical, income generating or grant funding, or if they have a direct impact on delivering the Future Sheffield Programme. We've also seen a 3.7 million impact of introducing the new vacancy factor budgeting and positive response of services recalibrating their forecasts to ensure that spending plans are now aligned to new expenditure targets. Corporate mitigations totaling 22.8 million have been released into the outturn, which include for the housing benefits subsidy loss, high-cost placements and use of our 2425 collection fund surplus. Our Future Sheffield Transformation Programme remains pivotal to long-term financial sustainability, driving service redesign and digital innovation. This is a collective effort and we are seeing strong engagement across the organisation to make these changes a reality. Appendix 4 provides further detail of the key treasury activities. The council continues to deliver significant capital investment with programme for 2526 to 2930 now standing at 940 million, mainly focused on housing. The prudential borrowing will fund about a third of this and while we've managed to delay external borrowing thanks to strong cash balances and early loan repayments, which has saved us 1.5 million a year, market conditions remain volatile and borrowing rates are high. Our strategy is to use internal resources where possible, but we're keeping a close eye on liquidity and interest rate risk, especially with the potential for low-bow loans to be recalled within the next quarter. Overall, the treasury management forecast is underspent against budget mainly due to lower interest costs following the debt repayments and our interest returns continue to outperform the base rate. We're maintaining a prudent approach prioritising security and liquidity over yield and remain well within our authorised borrowing limits. Looking at the collection fund at the end of September, we're forecasting a modest surplus of 0.2 million across the fund with about 402.8 million of net expenditure financed locally through locally-collected taxation this year. Both council tax and business rates are performing broadly in line with budget assumptions with collection rates and tax-based estimates holding steady. Any surplus won't affect this year's general fund position, but will be accounted for in next year's budget. We're taking a cautious approach, monitoring for risks as such changes in the tax base or payment rates and regularly reviewing the position to ensure we're prepared for any shifts. Given the scale of the collection fund, even small changes can have a significant impact. So, ongoing monitoring remains essential. Overall, the financial environment remains challenging with continued uncertainty around future government funding. We expect to receive the full details of the multi-year settlement in December. We're managing our risks robustly, especially around the delivery of Future Sheffield Programme and the medium-term financial strategy. And ongoing monitoring and regular reporting will ensure that we remain aligned and transparent as we respond to these challenges. So, while we've made progress in reducing the forecast overspend, significant pressures remain and our focus is on maintaining robust controls, delivering transformation and ensuring value for every pound spent. I'll now pass over to Damien to cover the key highlights from the capital programme monitoring included in Appendix 3 and after which we'll be happy to take any questions or discuss any specific areas in more detail alongside service colleagues.
Thanks, Chair. Yeah, so since quarter one, the overall capital budget's increased by 41 million, which has been a result of the approvals that have come through this committee. So, while the current year budget has increased to 196.9 million, the outturn, forecast outturn now is about 183.8, so that's variance to 13.1. And I think that still may be understated in terms of variance. Work's going on with project managers. I believe the forecast outturn may come down further as a result. And the below budget variance, yeah, it's likely to increase as well because there are some approvals due to come through for schemes that are forecasting to overspend currently in year. So, for instance, we had a forecast overspend on the chief porter flood defence scheme. That would disappear now. We've approved that additional 2 million. So, that will increase that budget gap, that variance, that underspend against budget. Of the main schemes that are forecasting to overspend over their life, the main risk remains around the levelling up fund Castle Site, where there's still a level of uncertainty around the cost on that, around the de-coverting works on the chief. So, there's a gainshare application still being worked on, but there's still uncertainty around that scheme. So, it's currently forecasting 5.1 million over its approved budget at the moment. There's not a cash flow issue at the moment because we have sufficient to keep us going. That scheme has slipped as part of those design works that have been ongoing. So, that remains one of the biggest risks. The Transforming Cities Fund, City Centre budget was due to be brought forward to this for approval, this one, at this committee. But further work's being done on that because there may be additional funding needing to be secured because it's also linked with the Nether Edge Wedge scheme. So, there's a piece of work to be done to look at the balance of the budgets across those two. So, they're the two where we've got overspend over the life of the scheme, where there's ongoing uncertainty and risk. The others, we do have plans in place or budgets coming for approval or knowledge of funding that is going to plug those gaps. Levels of forecasting have continued to be good but are still overly optimistic on a month-to-month basis. But it has, last month, I keep analysing this, 75% of schemes forecast with reasonable accuracy. So, there's a quarter that we still need to continue to work on to get that better. But I did some comparison work to last financial year and on average, we were 37% out on the forecast on a month-to-month basis and 2425. It's now at 27%. So, we have seen an improvement in that accuracy. Still need to work on it, but it looks like some of the work we're doing is going in the right directions. Forecasting models still say we're going to, our outturn's a bit optimistic. We've seen 13.8 million come off the outturn this, just this month, when we've been doing work with project managers to try and be more accurate in that. So, we're in a similar position to last year in that I would expect to see an outturn significantly below what it currently is forecast and what the budget is. So, I'm expecting to see around 35 million pounds of slippage come forward next month to this committee for approval, just to realign those budgets. But what I would say is that we were in a similar position this time last year, but at this time last year, we'd already re-profiled 60 million. So, actually, some of the work we did at year end to try and get this budget more accurate was successful, just not as successful perhaps as we would have liked. Key recent issues, I've mentioned the Castle Site, like I said, continues to be that main concern and the Transforming Cities Fund, City Centre. Overall, the Transforming Cities Fund and the City Region Sustainability and the transport schemes are still needing to settle down. I think once the TCF City Centre scheme has finalised its costs, we'll have the major chunks of that in place and we'll be able to deliver on the rest of those because the Don Lattcliff to City Centre should be coming through for approval next month, which is the other big chunk of that funding. Just to note as well, one little change to the risks around the schools' basic need funding. So, there are a significant number of additional secondary school places required. We've just seen a shift in the forecast on where those places are going to be required and whether temporary or permanent, which shows there could be around a 1.5 million shortfall in the schools' basic need funding by 2728. But there's a lot of work to be done on that. A lot of those are very high-level costings at the moment and we have got a couple of years to work through that. But it's just, that's just been a slight change I've seen recently.
Thank you, thank you very much. Is there any questions or comments, councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chair. With so much information in there, I can't resist it. I'm awfully sorry. On, if we go to the revenue thing, it's really good that we're seeing some improvement. So, I wanted to make sure I said that first before I come to the other bits. It really is good. On the Future Sheffield Programme, I mean, a lot of our financial success and survivability, if that's the right word, is dependent on that. When are we likely to see significant financial benefits coming through on that? And linked to that, you mentioned recruitment restrictions. Could you just give us a bit more detail on, so if somebody wants to recruit, who, which role is it that signs those off? Because that's the $64,000 question. I have a couple of questions on capex. Chair, do you want all of them at the same time or just?
I'll let one to your first question.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'll give a brief answer and then I'll let Philip probably add a little bit more context and detail. In terms of the recruitment restrictions, so there's some clear guidance that's been set out to ensure that the appropriate resourcing decision's been made. So, I think I've kind of highlighted if it's a health and safety critical role, if it's a regulatory requirement, if it's income generating or it's grant-funded, then, or if it impacts on the delivery of the Future Sheffield if it impacts on the delivery of the Future Sheffield Programme, that's one of the clear exemptions criteria. In terms of the process that we have for recruitment, there's a process that happens where managers fill in the right forms and it goes through the right routes of approval. And ultimately, the resourcing decision will go through the director of that service and then it will go through a panel which includes the chief finance officer and the director of HR as well. So it gets adequate oversight at quite a lot of different levels. In terms of the Future Sheffield question that you ask, the savings programme for Future Sheffield is almost 45 million over a three-year period and year one of that will kick in from next year. So in terms of the budget setting process that we're going through at the moment, the first year of that programme will be, well, it's already written into our medium-term financial strategy. So I think there's almost 11 million pounds worth of savings that we expect to be delivered through that programme next year, which are broken down by the key layers of the operating model that were set out in the medium-term financial strategy that was presented, I think, in July this year. I don't know whether you want to add any further information on, no?
No, you've covered it well. I think, I mean, you will start to see those through, as we do the briefings and then run up to the budget setting process, you will see the Future Sheffield programmes come through. Jane's right, there's 10.9 million pounds worth of savings that we expect. So the financial benefits will start to come through Future Sheffield. And what we're looking at is just be really clear in defining what they are, how they're delivered, and making sure that if they're not deliverable from the 1st of April and we get full year impact, that we're really clear that that's not the case. Some of those programmes will be expected to deliver part-year effects in year one and then different impacts as they sort of ramp up through years two and three. So what we'll start to see is, you will see year one coming through this budget setting process and then that will start to inform what comes through into years two and three to deliver that full 45 million pounds of savings that come through.
I'm just going to bring councillor Leverin because he has questions related to the same item.
Thanks, Chair. I was just wanting to clarify on the next last paragraph on page 66, where you say, currently reviewing arrangements for the delivery of Future Sheffield to ensure we have the capacity to deliver. Will that have any impact on the planned saving for this coming financial year?
Thank you. Really good question. I think what we're conscious of, we've got a finite amount of resources in the council to support this programme. We've been really clear on the trade-offs that we need to make in order that we deliver those commitments that we've made. So we don't expect that will be the case now. We will make sure that we can deliver the 10.9 million pounds savings. What we are also conscious of, and Jane referred to in the recruitment restrictions sort of response, if a post is linked to delivery of Future Sheffield and there's a very clear investor save proposal linked to that, that's one of the criteria that we would allow to be recruited. So we're not, and that's part of the reason for it being restrictions on recruitment rather than a complete freeze, so that we can progress the right recruitment to enable these programmes to progress and proceed, rather than withholding them and finding ourselves in a position where we sort of tie ourselves in so many networks, we just don't have the capacity to deliver. What we're conscious of is, we do have finite capacity in the organisation, what we're doing is redirecting that to prioritise Future Sheffield. Future Sheffield is the way we make sure this council is sustainable and delivers the services it needs for the city. That's our absolute priority and we've got to make sure that everything we do is in service of delivering Future Sheffield. And in some ways, if it's not, we ask the question, well, why would we do that?
Thank you councillor Smith. You could ask other questions.
Me again, thank you Chair. Damian, thank you for your comments on capital. And I was really pleased to hear that projects, you're prioritising projects which have got a direct and immediate financial benefit. But I also noticed that, and you also mentioned the, we've got some big overspend, so I think the Castle project is about 20, 25% over the original budget and the City Centre was about 50% when I looked at that. And yes, I understand that we have to plug the gap, so to speak, from the share of gain share capital, but that's very much a financial, a finite pot. So how much of the capex gain share is unallocated at the moment? How much have we got left? Or, I suppose to rephrase it, what's our ability like to plug gaps in the future?
So I've recently been involving some discussions on that because the gain share is sort of released in five-year tranches via the city region. At the moment, this has got, this scheme has got an allocation within, I think TRC and EDS have got the oversight on gain share generally. So they've got allocations for this scheme and for others that they see coming forward. So at the moment, I believe they've allocated notionally quite a substantial amount of what's remaining, but that's still able to be flexed. I haven't got the full details in front of me unfortunately, but I know there are works on going on that. But yeah, we currently, this is within the plan, the notional plan for that.
Quite happy to get an email on that if that helps you, thank you.
Thank you councillor Leverin, you wanted to come back? No? Okay, that's fine, I think you're the final question anyway, so you might as well ask it.
Okay, thanks Chair. Children, families, the 4.7 million pound slip in terms of overspend, is that going to continue or do we know, have we got on top of it? Because you said it was mainly high cost placements which is causing that, so I'd like to know what we're doing with that. Secondly, your single taxi journeys, you said we'll start delivery in quarter four, so at the moment we have 1,200 taxi journeys. How many will it that reduce by in quarter four and what's the target in the long term in terms of what we expect to get down to and when that will take place?
Thank you, Meredith Teasdale Strategic Director, children. If I start off with the overspend, the 4.7 million overspend, I think if I take you first of all to the place where we are in comparison to core cities and our statutory neighbours around the number of children in care. So our rate per 10,000 is 57 per 10,000 and the norm in core cities is 93 per 10,000. And for our stat neighbours, again, we are really performing very well, which shows that we're using our money well to have early intervention and prevention. That being said, the cost of high cost placements continues to rise, so our numbers have not gone up in that sense. The amount that is being charged by companies and there is the CMA report, the Competitive Markets Report, which shows that particularly in this area, there is a stronghold by a small number of organisations that are charging large sums of money and it is a national issue. And certainly in Wales, the Welsh Government have made a decision that no, no companies should get a profit from vulnerable children. There is also some impact around our children's homes, so Aldine is mentioned within the report. We did have a contract with the Ministry of Justice. That contract meant that we weren't meeting our costs, so we have reviewed that. We're looking to increase the number of welfare beds available, but there has been a slowness of ability to progress that, partly because the contract with the Ministry of Justice continued for longer because we were looking after children. So that's a contributing factor. The other contributing factor is the number of 18, 18-plus care leavers and the amount of money that we receive from the Home Office, which doesn't complement the amount of money we spend. So all of these things we're working on and there is a real rigorous process of ensuring that the children who come into our care and that where they need to go into residential provision, that we're constantly looking at how we reduce those costs, we look at the outcome for those children and that we are making sure that there is a long-term, a good placement for those children. And actually, in Sheffield, we have some of the highest number of kinship carers in the country and also again, looking to make sure that our children are fostering. So we are on top of it, we are constantly looking at it, we're also making sure that we're making the right decisions for the child and the placement that they have within the fact that there is a limited market in this country and the costs of those placements are considerably high. But we constantly challenge government around that as well and our DFE peers. Around home school transport, I will have to get you, sorry, yeah.
I'll just come back on that. So you said, a small number of organisations, which are increasing charges. How, what sort of rate of increase? Is this an ongoing thing? Will it continue to hit our budget and climb like at the moment?
It is a continuing theme and we're just doing some further work on this for Sheffield, but the figures that are talked about within ADCS, which is the Association of Directors of Children's Services, is a 20% increase over recent times. So there is something that we need to do nationally around this, but as I say, I can, we can circulate the, the, I'm trying, I can see the words in my head and I can't get them, the Competitive Market Authority paper on this, which was undertaken in 2023, which sets out the issue and that's the national, that shows the national picture and certainly happy to get that circulated to you as members. Around home school transport, so we have been doing, we've had weekly stand-up meetings around home to school transport. We've seen some real successes coming through, which are also linked to our young people becoming more independent. So we have seen a greater take-up of personal transport budgets. Recently, we also are continuing to recruit our independent travel trainers, particularly to support our post-16 young people to go to college independently. We've done a really tight piece of work around solo taxis and we have seen a reduction in solo taxis. So I'm going to give you numbers, but I'm going to double-check this and circulate it to you afterwards. But we were using, 73% of our journeys were solo taxis, that's already decreased over the last sort of six months to 63%. We do need to go lower because actually we do not compare well with our statistical neighbours around that use of solo taxis. But there is a really substantial piece of work. Ajman Ali and I have a stand-up meeting on a fortnightly basis where we look at all of the solo taxis. We have come into some arrangements where we have been funding part-time timetables and there is not a need for the council to transport children on part-time timetables. That's a responsibility of schools and again, we're working with schools for that to become their responsibility from January as well. So there's substantial piece to work and you will, we will see in the next quarter that there is a good reduction in the costs around home to school transport and that's been considerable work by a number of people within both Ajman Ali's team and my own team as well.
Councillor Douglas?
Yeah, thanks, you didn't forget, did you? I just wanted to say actually a word of appreciation for the depth of work that goes in there. I think it is worth reflecting on that actually, just when you were going through this, Jane, I was just thinking about the fact that actually we've got some massive challenges here and through and through there were people who were basically on top of them and, you know, there's still big challenges to face us, but it's that mitigation of risk. So, you know, when I was talking before about the need for assurance, I was going to say that, yeah, I'm feeling assured that people know what's going on and, you know, I think that's being conveyed to the committee. I also think it actually shows just the range of work and activities and big projects that the council has in hand. And, you know, of course, that's a huge benefit to people of the city, you know, for a long time to come, so that's really pleasing to know. So that's really all I was going to say, I didn't have any particular questions. One question for the committee though is just about, I think councillor Smith, you raised a really interesting point about monitoring the allocation of gain share and whether we should be looking at a report back to this committee at some point. I think Damian said that EDS and TCF maybe look at that, but, and it doesn't necessarily need to be done now, but I'm just throwing that idea out there, maybe this committee should be monitoring that.
Councillor Smith?
Thank you Chair, just trying to be helpful. So when I was Chair of EDS, the arrangements we put in place was that TRC monitored the capital element of gain share, correct me if I'm wrong guys. EDSC monitored the revenue side of things and they also received the report once it go, maybe twice a year, on the overall situation of gain share. So, but my information there could be a couple of years out of date, thank you.
But I will take that that's the case and if that is the case, we can circulate those reports and if you think there's something more that's needed, then we can look at that after.
Thank you very much. There is any further questions or comment? Thank you for the report today. I think we all understand the financial environment for local government remains highly challenging. We as a council continue to experience considerable pressure, but we will continue to take robust and focused action and, you know, reduce overspends, you know, keep putting mitigations into place. And we've already started seeing the benefits of that by, you know, the reduction by 4.6 million pounds, seeing that improvement from quarter one. So well done to, you know, you guys and everybody else that's working behind the scenes on this. So thank you very much. This report does contain notes for us, recommendations for us to note. Are we all agreed? Yeah, that's all been agreed, thank you so much, thank you very much. Moving on to the next item now, which is on page 25, item number 10, and this is the review of Sheffield's council tax reduction scheme. And over to you, John.
Good afternoon, my name's John West and I'm Senior Revenues and Benefits Manager. So the report recommends that the committee notes the review of the council's council tax reduction scheme, agrees that the scheme remains unchanged in 2627 apart from statutory amendments, and agrees that the council tax hardship scheme continues as set out in the report. So every year, the government requires councils to review their council tax reduction scheme and this report is the outcome of Sheffield's review. Our scheme, which has been in place since 2013, is based on the old council tax benefit rules. The working age households support is capped at 77% of the council tax liability and that was in response to regional funding cuts and pensioner households aren't capped as their scheme is set nationally. Currently, over 41,000 households receive support at a cost of around 44 million and that includes 26,000 working age households. We also provide an additional 2.6 million through a hardship scheme for the most vulnerable. Schemes vary across the country and many like ours are based on the old council tax benefit rules with a cap on support. The report considers the potential impact of changes to the scheme, including adjustments to the cap, but concludes that retaining the current approach offers stability and fairness without introducing unnecessary complexity or cost. Also, keeping the existing scheme ensures alignment with other benefits, avoids disruption to systems and processes and recognises the need for sufficient capacity to deliver any future changes successfully. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There is any questions or comments for, or there is councillor Johnson?
Of course, there is just one, actually two. What is being asked to agree these statutory changes and I just wonder if you could summarise what they are and what the significance? what they are and what the significance of them is. And then the broader question is, when you're saying, so, so in ten years, the number of people who actually benefit from council tax, benefit council tax support has gone from sixty thousand right down to forty thousand. So it's a lot less, lot fewer people who are getting support now. As kind of what, what's, what's the best explanation for why that is?
Yeah, in terms of the statutory changes, I'm afraid councillor Johnson, I can't tell you what those are off the top of my head, but it's, it's, it's changes to certain things like, certain parameters that are involved in, in the calculations.
Is that just the, the technicalities of how the scheme operates rather than anything very substantive? So, okay, understood.
I mean, I can certainly provide that after the meeting if you, if you want to see what those are. Yeah.
I think it's, then you could circulate, but I understand where you're coming from. Yeah, that's helpful. Thanks.
Yeah, and in terms of the, the dropping in caseload, it's just been a steady decline. It's, it's mean tested and demand led. There's no specific answer I can give to you for that. It seems to have plateaued in recent years, but no, we don't have any particular answer to that question.
I'm, I'm just wondering then, I mean, is there potential issue of take up then? Because of course, a lot of the times people would only claim council tax benefit when they're also claiming help with rent through housing benefit, which is a much more significant payment. And if, does it mean that potentially there are a lot of people out there who could be entitled to some extra support with the council tax, even though it's possibly only a small amount and quite a lot of administration? I don't know if that's a thing. Do you think it could be?
There's always that possibility, yeah. I mean, the, the council does promote the scheme, you know, when bills go out, it's promoted. If people choose not to claim, then that it's possible or if they're not aware. But when people make claims through the DWP or pension service, that's also pointed out to them. So that, so that there is, you know, direction given to people, yeah.
Thank you councillor Douglas. That's a really important question, I think I've asked in the past about how we are letting people know about this scheme. But we do send out letters and if people fall into arrears, they do get a letter and advice on how they can apply for this scheme as well. Because what we don't want is the reduction because people don't know about it and they're not applying for it.
Yeah, no, that's right. I mean, I suppose when people were claiming housing benefit, then they would claim council tax support at the same time as a combined case. But now as people are moving on to universal credit, there's potential that people could fall through the gaps. But again, there are still processes in place to encourage people to make that claim when they do move. Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So there is any further questions or comment? This report does come with recommendations for approval. Are we all agreed? Yep, that's all agreed. Thank you very much, John. The next committee meeting will be on the fifteenth of December at two P M. Thank you very much, everybody, for your time today. Thank you.